Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in a new year to conduct business for this city and the citizens. Father, we pray now for wisdom, guidance, understanding. Father, we pray that your will is done. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda, we'll swear in the newly-elected council with that recommended by Ronnie Wooder. Ms. Rita?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wooder, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform the duties of councilmember of the City of Eastman as important to the Charter there, as well as the Constitution laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America?
I do.
Okay, next on the agenda is to appoint the chairman for the new year. Do I hear a motion?
I nominate Brandon Moses.
I'll second the nomination.
Okay.
There are the nominations. I make a motion that we appoint Brandon Moses to chairman.
Seconded, Mr. Moses.
Okay, everybody ready? Okay, let everybody raise your hand.
Anybody from the audience want to say anything?
If you didn't close your nominations...
I seconded.
We will.
Yeah, he did. You did, didn't you? Yeah, he did.
Well, we can't hear you.
Don't get everybody right on that. Okay. Time for one more.
I want to thank y'all councils for legging me again. I'm not perfect, but I try to be perfect. That's all I can tell you. All right, next appointment to be the vice chairman. I hear a motion for vice chairman.
I nominate Buddy Pippen.
I second. Anybody up on the floor that can say anything? All right, do I have any more motions for another vice chairman? I need a nomination to close this. I need a second.
Nomination of the second, I make a motion that we appoint Buddy Pippen.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand.
Second.
Second, okay, second by Prince. All in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Okay, need to appoint the chaplain. Do I hear a motion for chaplain?
I nominate Prince Dawson as chaplain.
Okay, any more nominations?
I'll second their nomination.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand.
I'll make a motion. No other nomination, I'll make a motion. I'll appoint Prince Dawson as chaplain.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Second, all in favor, raise your hand. We're trying to get you in there, ain't we? We're gonna get it right before we get through with anything. Okay. We're gonna stick here and get it right this time. We need to appoint an attorney. Do I hear a motion for a attorney?
I nominate Ms. Rea Loth, the city attorney.
All right.
Second.
Second, anybody who would like to say anything about that? Now, I need a motion to close. If there's nobody else that you want to vote for?
I make a motion to appoint Rea Loth, the City of Eastman's attorney.
Okay, all in favor? Need a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all.
Ronnie, it's Prince. The second.
I do. All right, we need to... Ronnie, a little ruckus out there. All right, we need to appoint a court judge.
I nominate Joseph Marjan.
Second, nomination, anybody have any questions on that or anything? Motion to close.
Make a motion to appoint Joseph Marjan, the court's court judge.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Okay, next thing, we need to approve the agenda.
We need to add a council presentation on there.
Number seven, nine.
We can do that running the December thing, number two.
Number nine, council presentation. Okay, I need a motion, does anybody have anything to say on that? None, I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Okay, we need to approve the minutes of December 17, 2015, special call meeting, and December 28, 2015, regular meeting. First of all, let's print the minutes of December 17, 2015. Do I hear a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to approve the special call meeting December 17 minutes.
Anybody have any questions? None, I need a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. December 28, 2015, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the special call meeting.
Any questions by anybody?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, regular meeting.
Regular meeting, any questions? None, I need a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Old business, we're having old business. Okay, we're running into new business. Monthly fire department report. Mr. Chairman, good luck.
We had forty-seven calls for the month of December, thirty-two in the cities, fifteen nine in the county. We had a number of structural fires for the month of December. We had one entirely called by a plate seeder over on Dura Street. We had a structural fire called by a stove, minor structural fire called by electrical shortings, and two structures with intentional arson. And one under, one under terminal calls. First fire down quite a bit to one. We had two pieces of farm equipment that burned. We only have one gas leak, natural gas leak here and there. We answered seventeen life support calls and eight vehicle accidents. Several electronic alarms, light, light, and so forth, just, just waiting for them.
Okay, do I have any questions from anybody? Next thing on the agenda, monthly police department report. Ms. Becky?
For the month of December, we patrolled eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-one miles, used a thousand and eighty-four gallons of gas, answered thirteen hundred and sixty-one calls, and worked fifteen traffic accidents.
Becky, with, I know y'all are wearing yourself out running all over town and checking car windows and cars and this, that, and the other, and all. Is there anything we can do to help you? And I reckon the first thing that comes to my mind is if they need overtime, if it should be approved.
That's what I was gonna ask, is there any way that we problem now? Last night, we did have five, so we had two extra ones last night. They stayed from twelve to five this morning. So I am gonna have to add some overtime in there to maybe we can get it. Most of our problems have been in the subdivisions, as you well know, and you're made good, I think we got twenty-one in Greenwood Heights, it's well about thirty-five. And then we had several on the Hockinsville Highway so far. But we probably are gonna have to have a little overtime until I can get this straightened.
Is that something we need to make a motion to approve that to help them?
I mean, it'd be good.
Any other thoughts or comments?
No, I think, I think it needs to be done.
I'd like to offer a motion to approve overtime to assist police department officers on this hugely increased number of crimes and things that are going on right now. So if you've got officers that are willing to work on it, I'd like a motion to approve the overtime for you.
Do we have any questions from the audience?
I do. Chairman, can they come forward or do it here?
Can you do it right there?
Well, did we talk about this problem without any specification as to what it is? Thirty-one what went occurred and it's kind of vague?
Vehicles where people have broken out windows or either just gone through vehicles is what we've had. It's all been mostly in vehicles. We did have two different burglaries yesterday, but I don't think that they were related because the county had some too that might, we might can go back and tie in with yours, Mr. Prince, but all of them has been vehicles that they've gone through. Most of the time, they haven't stolen anything, but if they do see something in a vehicle, they have busted out the windows in three of their vehicles in the Jessup Heights area to just give whatever they had, they could see in there. But that's how many we have so far.
And also, there was an armed robbery that occurred this month in the city with an assault rifle that not very much was mentioned. We couldn't get comment from the police department on.
That did happen, and I did send you a news release on that, I did. We have, we have, I've asked the GDI, they'll be with us on that, but I did send you a news release.
Excellent, you did, and I would also like to take this time to offer any assistance that I could give you, chief, in getting word out to the public in any way possible, shape or form. I think that would be very helpful if you could work with me, I'd be glad to do that for you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to ask the newspaper to make the citizens aware that if they see... Becky, let me, let me get this right. To make the citizens aware, if they see anybody that don't look right, please call 911. Okay. No, we ain't good on that. I got a, I got a motion and a second, I need, let's see, we're doing the overtime. Oh, overtime, yeah, I need a motion and a second for the overtime for the police department. You got it, the all in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Approve the monthly bills of December 28, 2015, through January 11, 2016.
If you have any questions, come see me.
Any questions from the audience? None, I need a motion to approve the monthly bills of December 28, 2015, through January 11, 2016.
Make a motion to approve the papers.
I got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Okay, number four, we need to reschedule January 25, 2016, council meeting, Mary Day conference, and a webinar. Ms. Becky?
The conference is 24th to the 25th.
What's that, 23rd, 24th?
Yeah. So we've scheduled, rescheduled the 25th.
Is there court on the 26th?
There is, sir.
Court is... Twenty-eight?
I think so.
Prince, Prince, twenty-fourth.
Okay. There's the court day.
What's twenty-eight Thursday? Thursday.
Is that, is that prior to the week?
The one that...
Is that regional commission week that week? Is that the third or fourth week?
Oh.
Twenty-eighth?
You're the twenty-third, and the third week of regional commission. Regional commission is the, yeah.
That week?
That week, Thursday, that'd be the second, the second Thursday. The second Thursday. Fourth Thursday. When is our meeting supposed to be?
It's supposed to be Tuesday. You can't do it on that Tuesday in this quarter.
It's supposed to be twenty-two, I think. Okay, twenty-eight looks good, means we're strong. Then they have no problem with that. Any motion to approve the twenty-eighth for our next meeting?
All right, I'll make that motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, any question from anybody? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Okay, number five, request to reappoint housing authority resident commissioner Tracy Hamilton's annual appointment.
And this is Ms. Tracy that's been on there and they're requesting that she be reappointed.
The other thing I want to say, I know they're requesting her to be reappointed, but I know the council, and our most recent appointment is made that we're gonna start advertising those out, at least until we do a round of all of them. So I guess it's kind of my, I'm leaning towards going ahead and doing that with this, to advertise the availability, the requirements, and favoring.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Well, you want to, what I'm saying is, let's do that until our next meeting. Would that be plenty of time on it?
Yes, and she, you know, until we make a decision, she's, you know, can continue on that.
Right, all right, then I made a motion from you on that.
I make a motion that we advertise the, the opening for housing authority resident commissioner with the necessary requirements, and that we also send a letter to the housing authority just to learn him, to that, that's what we're doing, that we'll take their letter into consideration.
All right, do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Do I have any questions from anybody? None, I made a motion?
Vote.
No, we don't got it, need a vote, all in favor, raise your hand. I gotta get used to it. Okay. All right, number six, designate a transfer in bank account from Bank of Eastman at bank request. The City of Eastman total deposit cannot exceed two point five million dollars at the Bank of Eastman. The bank has to buy bonds to place the account to keep them mature, and it costs them more than it pays. All right, the city needs to transfer at least eight hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars from the Bank of Eastman by the end of January the sixteenth. We got two banks, and I'm gonna make a motion, motion that we do calling them banks. I'd just like to say it's good to have this problem.
Yeah.
We got a little one that the bank wants. And that's what it amounts to. Oh. How do, how do we, I reckon, okay, 'cause we've got, I reckon, we've got accounts in all three of the banks, right? And I know we've got some certificates, CDs of the Colony Bank. Oh, we've got some accounts at Citizens Bank, which the largest, looking at this, all these accounts here, all the larger ones at the Bank of Eastman. Would it be, okay, and I reckon, I'm looking at the Splot account here, 'cause it is the, it's the largest one. Right. If, what if, and I don't know, the possibility of some, if, I don't know if either the banks offer like, can the Splot account be put into a money market checking account? So that we actually, that possibility of making, I mean, I'm sure the interest number's about zero, zero, zero point nothing, you know, if we made just, if we made a tad on it.
I don't need to be sure how many checks we can write.
And that, you know, I'm just throwing that out, 'cause I don't, I don't know if, you know, if that's, if we could even do that with that Splot account, or it's got to be in just a plain checking account that...
Is it in a, what kind of, it's in an interest-bearing account? It's in a checking account? I mean, I'd have to look, I don't see why you could have a interest-bearing account, but you need to be able to write checks out of it continuously, 'cause, right, you have monthly expenses coming out of that account.
And I reckon, that's what my, is, is, can we check? 'Cause according to this letter, we got to have it out by the thirty-first. Can, if I make a motion or something, give, you know, the authority to maybe check with both of the banks and see if they have something like that, what may be the best interest, who gives the best interest, and if, like I said, check into, if we can write as many unlimited amount of checks, or if you're limited to five checks a month or something, or...
Sure, you should, you should certainly look into it.
This is what I just was looking at, is any checks, and you, you have that.
And like I said, I've, because this is just plain checking account, so why I said, I'm just, I'm thinking about, 'cause I mean, that's nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So like I said, if we made a little, a little bit each month on it, 'cause every money's still going into it every month, that's, that's what is coming out. And then we could actually know and make a decision, 'cause if we, whoo, that'd be cut and close, but you find that out, we might could have a little call meeting or something and decide and vote to move it, we, I mean, it's not like, what I'm gonna do is call and say move it. So, or we could wait till the next meeting, but make a move to do it the twenty-ninth, so. What y'all learned about that, or? And I reckon, I'm just, 'cause it's sort of like, you got Citizens Bank, we got Colony Bank, flip a coin, see who's gonna, who can we get it to? 'Cause you look at it, like I said, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And...
Any more thoughts? You can look at it better. You want to make a motion?
No, I need to rescind my vote. I need to rescind my motion.
Now, I'll, I'd like to offer a motion to give Ms. B. the go-ahead to check with Colony Bank and Citizens Bank and Trust, and to see, check into an interest-bearing account and get the specifics on each account, check writing number per month, and who would, who has the best interest. And get some information, and we can make that decision and decide and move it to one of those banks.
All right, I'll second the motion.
All right, do I have any questions from anybody? None, I need, show of hands, all in favor? So carried by all. We need to, number seven, designate a voting ballot for GMA special membership meeting Sunday, January 24th, Mayor's Day Conference, not nominate, but it's fifth. Any questions from anybody? All in favor, raise your hand. Ronnie, he knows all, everything out there on that stuff, that's, he's already on GMA too, so, I mean, you know, that's a bit brainer. Okay, approve to advise for bid to remove Devon from James Avenue Storage Yard. Ms. B.
And let me just show you these pictures to try to push them down to you. This is just some pictures of the lot that we need to advertise to take bids on, for cleaning that up, so we can put some more out there.
Yeah.
Just about four.
Let's come, we moved in Hollywood, we burned it.
Yeah.
Now, we done pretty well, I think, and that's pretty well, right?
Yeah.
Strike late. All right, I need a motion to approve to advertise for this to remove the group. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any question from anybody? None, I need a vote? All in favor? Okay, number nine, councilman's presentation, Mr. Bobby Sly, would you step forward, please?
I didn't come here for that.
You don't read, you don't even want to get a note.
I came here to get on Ronnie.
Did you get on it?
I was gonna tell Ronnie that I came to make sure he showed up. When she was swearing him in, I was gonna say, I object, but that's a wedding, man.
Move left to the front.
I'm excited.
Anybody in other counties want to come down? While we read this, Louie?
I can read, I can.
No, I'm reading, too.
No, you can read it.
I took very carefully, make sure you got here. Did you even know this was going to happen?
No, I didn't know that was gonna happen. I mean, I was gonna pick on Ronnie, that was.
I knew what I was, you know. Okay. The City of Eastman, in honor of your service, Bobby Sly, the City Council District Board, January 1st, 2012, December 31st, 2015, thank you for all your exceptional work and prayer and dedication throughout the years, our best wishes go with you, City of Eastman, council and employees.
I appreciate that. I, I like to say a few things, but I'll drop two or two. But I've been with several councils, like I've said in the past, and we've had a lot of issues with other councils not getting along. But I, this council right here, like Mr. Prince says in his prayers, agree to disagree. I don't think we've had the first argument, the first anything in the, I guess, two years since we've all been together. But that's gonna be a good city council right there. You can bet on it, and I thought they'll, they'll do the best for Eastman and what they for the people, I know they will. I, I thank you, but you got it, all of you, I thank you. And Ronnie, I sure thank you for taking my place. You're welcome.
If you come back, you can ask me, will?
I'll tell them, I said, I won't say, can't hear ya.
All right, we run down to the city manager's report.
And I don't, I think we've already covered everything, so I've just enjoyed my stay with the city, and enjoying a few, my heart.
No. I have a card, thank you, Card, Ms. B., you want me to read that, all the council. This is Eastman City Council, thank you very much for wonderful reception, thank you for my beautiful gift. It will service as a reminder of my time with the city. It has been a joy and a pleasure to work with the city for the past forty-eight years and one month. past 48 years and one month. I had to add that in there. And I, if I can help in any way, feel free to call. Give all of, everybody get your number in. I'm looking forward to retirement. Thank you again for everything. Thanks again, Bee. And while I'm reading the thank you thing, I might as well go ahead and do this right now. I got you a key to the city.
Oh, thank you very much. I see. I can, I can still come back, even though they're taking my keys, I can still come back.
Okay. Other business from the council. Mr. Woodard?
Sir?
You got anything you would like to say?
I do. I just want to thank everybody for giving me this opportunity to be on the city council.
You can't hear me? My goodness.
We'll have to sit back down then. I want to thank everyone for supporting me in, in this endeavor. Other than a short period of time when my father was in the military, Eastman's been my home. It's been my home, it's been my wife's home, my parents' home. Raised two daughters here, and I just see this as an opportunity. I just want to try every way I can, try to get something back to a town that has meant so much to me. With every new position, there's a learning curve, so please be patient. If I hold my hand up at the wrong time, or speak out of turn, I try not to do that too often. But once again, I want to appreciate the people, their, their well wishes, their pats on the back, and, uh, I hope I can make a difference in, in, in this fine city. Thank y'all.
Mr. Prince? I don't, I don't have anything. Just want to welcome our new council member, and we look forward to this year and to doing greater and better things for our city. Mary?
I just want to, again, uh, welcome Mr. Woodard, as officially the district board council person, and then just to say to enjoy that newness. Once you get a few miles on you, they're going to ride you a little harder. And, uh, that's all that.
Buddy? I'll follow everybody down. Welcome, welcome. Hang on. Oh, a cou- a couple of things. When, oh, when we go and start, I read moved more lines on some other streets and all, can we possibly, we really need to, is let the people on those streets know, because Southern Avenue back there, boy, they had told me of, folks come home that evening, and mailbox laid in the yard, the driveway's cut, and nobody knew about it, and I don't know, some of them down here told you up, and everything. Oh, can we let people know in advance that, that that's going to happen? I mean, because, like I said, I think most of them would have just said, you know, if, if we, if I'd have known that, then, you know, we come barreling in, pull in the driveway at night, and it's cut, and a big ditch in it, and you go check the bail, the mailbox laying there in the, in the ground, and so, if we just let them know a little in advance that, I mean, we had to print something out, if they're not home here, put it at their house or something, to alleviate those, those issues. And also, I have been selected to the G M A's Legislative Policy Council, so, we are, that, we had a webinar Friday, we had a, a conference call this morning in preparation for the legislative session that started, and I don't know how many times we'll have to go to Atlanta in the next, it's supposed to be 40 days, but I swear they turn it into 90 or 100. But the conference call, the purpose of the L P C is, I read again, in my cases, to bring back, uh, legislative issues and problems that may, uh, local municipalities, cities will be facing, and today, already out of the chute, some of the items, I'm just going to quickly go down with ethics, the old, the fines and the old system, they're still trying to get that worked out, the, uh, nice fireworks legislation that was passed last year, that you shoot them and pop them all night long, and local governments can't say anything about it, they're going to be blasting that hard. With the excise, the gas tax and all, the truckers and the trucking industries are pushing to try and get, uh, heavier weight limits on their loads and all, and it's like with the truckloads and stuff, you know, they're tearing up city streets and all as they are, so, we'll be fighting that, that issue, and, you know, instead of getting a heavier, uh, body cameras, police departments and all use the cost of storage, because legislature, legislature came up, that they've got to store that information for so many, so long, and the cost of that's astronomical, so they're going to be working, will be working with legislature to, uh, try and get something else worked out about that, even shorten the length of time for storage, or find another way where it's not going to cost all the cities tons of money. Taxes, of course, uh, annexation and de-annexation, uh, we had an incident, I think, in Pierce County down in that neck of the woods, legislature went down there and, uh, de-annexed a bunch of property from one county and gave it to the other, and nobody down there even knew about it. So, they're going to be, we'll be looking into, working with the legislature about, cities and counties need to know, you're sitting up there in Atlanta, trying to take away a bunch of property and all. Of course, Religious Freedom Restoration Act, and Home Rule Authority, and that's just to mention a few, uh, as of 8:30 this morning, so, it's, uh, it's an honor to be nominated, put on that, uh, G M A committee and all, and, uh, keep council and all involved on everything's goings on, going ons and going offs, and walk the battles off. And I think that's it. Well, I have been elected to the council board at Y D C. Does that count? But I think he said he was a nurse manager down there, he's threatening out.
They're turmoil, right there.
But, uh, I am proud of Ronnie Woodard. Um, I've been knowing Ronnie since the 80s, when I went to work with him, and he went to work with me, let me rephrase that. And I was the boss man down at the R Y D C, and then he went off and got caught and become my boss man again. Then I went to the Y D C, and he come over there again, was my boss man again. And now you might say, I'm your boss man again. But we do thank you, and I know you're going to do a good job, because I've been knowing you a lot of years, and I know what you're capable of.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. I'd like to say one other thing.
All right, so stand up and come up and give us your name?
No, not like come up.
Oh, okay.
I was going to tell you that, uh, it'll be a while before I'll be back, because every time you just tell them to raise your hand, I'll go and raise mine again. So, I got to get out of there before I come back, but thank you for doing it for me tonight.
All right, we love you, Bobby. Okay, other business from council. Got that taken care of. All in this space. Anybody that would like to come up and speak?
Yeah.
Let that guy come on. Who's that? Come up and give us your name, rank, serial number.
I can do that. First general lawyer as well. Charles Williams, Development Authority. Uh, again, I echo everybody else, welcome, Ronnie, glad to have you here. Uh, I wanted to give you a brief update on Georgia Military College. Their trustees are meeting as we speak. It started at, uh, 5:30 this afternoon, will end at 7 o'clock tonight. I'll hear where we are. I feel very comfortable, comfortable about it, and very positive about it. I wish I could tell you tonight, so we could move forward, but I do have the lease in hand, and I will be back with you very shortly, certainly by the next meeting, and probably in the morning, I'll text most of you, so that you understand what's going on there. But you would ask me about buildings, where are buildings, so, so, we've been waiting on their trustee group to meet, and that's occurred this evening. And secondly, uh, if we could follow in the example of the county and put, uh, department heads at the beginning of old business, you been going to do that for three months, so it's a good idea to look at, or maybe a reason that you don't want to do it.
No, I just don't think about it. You need to remind me when you come in here, then we can, when you put, I tell you what. Where's our new chairman, isn't he here tonight? I mean, uh...
I think that's you, buddy.
No, the, uh, are you city manager?
Ah, yes, he is.
I would, will you please put that on the agenda for today? I would like to say, I would like for our new city manager to step up here, if he would. I still get to speak.
Thank you very much.
I was like, this coach, you, he did. I appreciate that. You started it.
That's true.
You started it, and I knew that, like, you had a word to say.
This is the line, yeah, but...
This is our, going to be our new city manager, and, uh, that's the first thing you want to do, put that on the agenda for today.
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome. Welcome. Would you like to say something?
Well, I, I can't even sit in the back row, so I wouldn't have to do this tonight, but I'm trying to watch them as big as closely as I can, make sure I'm following those footsteps. No, um, I definitely would like to, um, to thank the council for the opportunity to work here in, in my hometown. It's a blessing. A lot of people don't get that opportunity to stay home and, um, you know, to be able to work. I'm very passionate about this city. It is where I live, so, um, I'm really excited about the opportunity. I'm going to echo, uh, Mr. Bobby's words about, you know, the council group, you know, so far, it's, with my current position at the Regional Commission, I've worked with just about every one of you, except for Mr. Woodard, but I look forward to that, and exciting things coming up. I agree.
And we'll see you the 15th.
You will.
All right. Anybody else would like to come up and speak? I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Do I hear a second? Now, hold it, hold it, Mr. Prince. Ronnie, would you?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Look here, by all.